At this time, I would like to call to order the Lee County Board of Education meeting, our regular board meeting for October 8th, 2019. At this time, I would ask for a moment of silence. Amen. At this time, if you will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, there's no public comments, so we'll move right on to our Lee County Schools' vision and policy. So, Lee County Schools' vision statement.
The Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for our students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to an academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
And our Code of Ethics for school board members?
The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should: avoid conflict of interest and appearance of conflict of interest as we handle the work of the Board; avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board; avoid the misuse of public funds; avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts; and avoid making public -- excuse me, avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. And now, entertaining motion to approve our agenda for tonight's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the agenda for October 8th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of tonight's agenda, sign with a "a"?
Aye.
Those opposed, like a "s"? Our agenda is approved. And now, entertaining a motion for our regular board meeting minutes from September 10th, 2019.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the minutes for our regular board meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving our minutes for our regular board meeting on September 10th, 2019, sign with a "a"?
Aye.
All those opposed, like a "s"? Our minutes are passed. Moving on along to the Chairman's report. And first, I want to say we have a large crowd in here tonight, and I welcome you all. And I also like to welcome the fall weather that is outside at this point as well. I am actually happy to have on a jacket tonight and not be burning up here. First thing I'd also like to do is say congrats to Stephanie Clark, our Principal of the Year at BT Bullock. So, congratulations, Stephanie, and it was a wonderful ceremony yesterday.[214.12][214.12](APPLAUSE). Moving right along, the North Carolina School Board Association is seeking nominations for the following awards to be presented during the 2019 School Board Association Annual Conference, the date switches November 18th through the 20th in Greensboro, North Carolina. They're sinking the Raleigh Dingman Award, County Commissioners of Year Award, School Board Member Leadership Award, School Board Leadership Award, Award for Excellence in Educational Programs. Board members, that information is in your packets, and if there's something you would like to submit, please make sure you fill out the appropriate paperwork and get with Mrs. Britt. Moving right along to another item that is going to take place on November 18th at that conference. We are awarded four delegates for the association meeting per se, and at this time, ours two delegates signed up, myself and Dr. Smith, and I actually need a formal vote from the Board to approve those two delegates or any others that wish to attend. So, at this time, I entertain a motion that we approve Dr. Smith and I to be the Board delegates, and also entertain a motion for anyone else that would like to go as well.
No other people. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Dr. Smith and yourself as Board delegates.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of Dr. Smith and I attending on behalf of the Board at the conference, sign with a "a"?
Aye.
Those opposed, like a "s"? Thank you. And that would be in Greensboro, November 18th through the 20th. All that being said, on September 11th, myself and several others of the Board got to attend a district-wide meeting, and there, this Board received the Silver Bell Award for our training that we've all been dedicated to, for training in excellence and commitment during the 2018-2019 school year. So, well done, and congrats to everyone on this Board for the training we've received and kept up the number of required hours we're supposed to. So, well done, everybody. And it's the Silver Bell Award. Okay, moving right along. I know it's gearing up for in October, and normally around this time, we have a lot of discussion about our calendar, so I'm hearing lots of discussion from teachers and administrators, and I'm looking forward to that good conversation through our calendar committee and hoping that you'll provide feedback through your representative at each school, and we'll have, hopefully, a calendar presented to us, and then, I think, within the next two months, I feel like is what it normally is. So, but again, I'm hearing a lot of good conversation from teachers and from the community as well, and all that input is definitely invited. So, my last thing on the Chairman's report, I've been looking forward to announcing this for a long time, so mark your calendars. On November 3rd at 2:00 p.m., we will have a formal dedication of W. Wicker Elementary School. So, on November 3rd at 2:00 p.m., we will have a formal dedication for W. Wicker, and everyone is invited to attend. Just this coming up weekend, actually, W. Wicker reunion will be taking place at W. Wicker with the alumni. So, that is again, November 3rd at 2:00 p.m. Well, I'm out of breath, out of time, and ready to hand it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, before Dr. Bryan goes, could I have the floor just for a minute, please?
Sure.
Just a couple of comments?
About?
Just some thank yous from things that happened last week in the public?
Sure, go ahead.
First of all, just a public thank you to Murtech and to Jerry Pedley, and also to yourself for opening your doors up for Manufacturing Day. It's a great opportunity for our kids to get over there and tour those facilities and see what we offer, so thank you for that. Also, had the opportunity last weekend to sit in on a signing of a town in Mexico that is now our sister city, and it was a great opportunity, and I think it opens up some doors for us culturally and educationally to have maybe Mayor Mann or Jan Hayes to talk about that sister city and the things that it offers. So, that was a great, another good thing that happened this week. And then also, a very special thank you to folks at Lee County High School. We celebrated the '68 football team on last Friday night, and to me, school pride is one of the most important things that you can have for school, and it was never more evident than that Friday night for the '68 team and also the present team and the members of the faculty that were there. So, thank you to Lee County Schools and Lee County High School for a job well done last Friday night.
Thank you. Dr. Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Patricia Cauldron to come forward, please, to recognize our Beginning Teachers of the Year, and as she's making her way up to the podium, just like to thank her again for all the hard work she and her staff put forward to help our beginning teachers, and what a difference it makes. Patricia?
Good evening, Board. I'd like to have the nominees, please come join me. I've got several in the audience. So, this is the first year we've held a Beginning Teacher of the Year recognition for our teachers. We always do our Teacher of the Year, but not our Beginning Teacher of the Year. NCAT is actually sponsoring a statewide program where they're going to name a statewide Beginning Teacher of the Year, so we were able to select. We had to choose from our Beginning Teachers Year Two, and I'm going to actually read out the names of everyone that was nominated, and if you're here, if you will wave at the Board and let them know who you are. If you want to turn around and say "hey" to these people, and then let's turn around and look at the Board, if you'll turn around and face the Board and wave at them when I call your name, so they'll know who you are, okay? So, I have Courtney Martindale from Bragg Street Academy, and she is with us tonight. Kathryn West from Tramway Elementary, she was not able to make it. As you know, when you have high-flying teachers, they have lots of things that they do outside of school, so we have a few that could not come today. Kayla Gonzalez, Southern Lee High School. Olivia Moore from Deep River. Joni Ellis from Warren Williams. Rebecca Betts from Eastleigh Middle School. Myosha Fashi from Sand Lee Middle School. Simil Goyer from LEC. Rebecca Jackson from Lee County High School. Haley Cochran from Floyd Knight. Stephanie Hayden from Ingram. Megan Falk from Edwards. Sarah Swindell from Bullock. And then, our Lee County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year this year is Morgan Carlisle from Wesley Middle School.[657.02][657.02](APPLAUSE). And we were able to go to Wesley and recognize Morgan for all of her amazing accomplishments, but I have to tell you, it's an honor standing with these people. We have amazing first, second, and third-year teachers in our district. They do wonderful things in their classroom, outside of their classroom, and all of the ladies sitting, standing here and the ones that we mentioned that couldn't make it, they're not just doing wonderful things in the classroom, but wonderful things for their schools. And it was very difficult to, thank goodness we had a rubric, because it was very difficult to select our one person to represent us, but she will be going on to the region level and hopefully then to the state level as we move into the next part of the year. So, thank you for allowing us to come, and thank you for recognizing them.
Thank you. Congratulations. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Johnny Waller to come forward, please, for the Clean School of the Month.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members. Dr. Bryan, it's my pleasure tonight -- I know. I remember one time to bring it down. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize our schools for the clean job that they do. A clean school is a safe school and a happy school. All of our schools, again, this month scored over 90, which is great. We had six schools with a score of 96, one school with a score of 97, two schools with a score of 98, and Greenwood, our number-one school, with a score of 99. So, Ms. Cauldron, do that for them?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you again for this honor and tell you that my folks were very proud. I know I said before that I'm just about out of good stories about them because they are so often recognized for the excellence that they do in our building, but I do have a great story about them. This summer, well, last year in April, my head custodian, on her way to school at 6:00 a.m., was hit by a drunk driver. She was out of school and out of my building until about two days before the teachers arrived at the end of the summer, beginning of this school year. So, I had Mr. Stewart and Ms. Kirby. Ms. Kirby got married and left us, so this summer, I had one custodian in the building, Mr. Stewart, who worked himself to death to make that school look wonderful despite the fact that he was by himself. Ms. Brown is back, so it's really, really special to us this early on because we just feel like we're getting our feet back on the ground to be recognized for the job they do. So, I appreciate it, and I will happily take this time back to our schools. Thank you very much.[854.42][854.42](APPLAUSE).
One quick announcement. For your dates, the Head of Class presentation will take place on Wednesday, October 30th, at the Dennis A. Wicker Civic Center. That's another date to share with everybody. Accountability update, our principals have been working on their school improvement plans, two of which will be presented tonight under New Business, Dr. Dawsonback, and our two principals from East and West will be presenting. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Moving along to our committee reports for Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Stephen Cobble.
Mr. Chairman, we had a Curriculum and Instruction meeting at Southern Lee High School on September 25th. Board members involved were myself and Ms. Pam Sutton. During the meeting, there were a few, more than a few things to be attached to it, but one of the most important one was the Beginning Teacher Plan that Ms. Cauldron has already addressed somewhat. I'd like to read the introduction and some components in it. In accordance with the North Carolina Board of Education policy, the Lee County Schools' Beginning Teacher Support Program provides for new teacher orientation accompanied by a three-year induction period, Beginning Teacher Assignment within the area of licensure supported by a trained mentor, an annual Beginning Teacher Professional Development Plan, attention to teacher working conditions, a full-time Beginning Teacher Coordinator, full-time licensure specialist, training on the North Carolina Professional Teaching Standards, and the North Carolina Educators Evaluation System, and annual systematic evaluation of the Beginning Teacher Support Program. The components that Lee County Schools will provide for the efficient management of the BT Support Program by employing one full-time Beginning Teacher Coordinator and one full-time licensure specialist to serve the districts. All new hires will be assessed based on experience and licensure status, and teachers within their first three years will be deemed Beginning Teachers. For one of our Beginning Teachers to already have some award to take off with or speaks well of the quality of folks that are being hired and the folks that are being involved in the school system. There is more, and there's more to come for all of them. Along with the Beginning Teacher Plan, we had a data overview and just the highlights of that. Dr. Chris Dawsonback pointed out that elementary schools use 100% of their tests for evaluation. In the high school, out of 37 growth-related tests, less than 20% of the tests are used to evaluate the high school progress. It behooves us to kind of check behind the scenes to see where some of these scores come from. Dr. Dietrich pointed out that the cohort graduation rate, that is, the number of students who entered ninth grade and graduated in four years, for Lee County Schools, have placed Lee County Schools above the state average. So, that speaks well for what's going on in the high schools. We had literacy updates and progress reports from the various high school principals. Mr. Chairman, our next high school CNI meeting will be November 13th, 2019, at Lee County High School. Our next middle school CNI meeting will be at Eastleigh Middle School on October 9th, that's tomorrow, and our next elementary CNI meeting will be at Greenwood Elementary, 3:30 p.m. on October 23rd on a Wednesday. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Moving right along to Facilities and Technology, Dr. Lynn Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The F&amp;T Committee met on September 24th. It was a fairly brief meeting. Actually, we only had one item on our agenda, and it involved a contract for maintenance on our elevators in our district, of which there are six. We talked about this in August. Mr. Love was not enthralled with the contract at that point, so he brought us a new contract at our September meeting, which we approved, and that item is under your consent agenda for the evening. The next F&amp;T Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, October 29th, at 4:00 in the Heinz Building.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee, Dr. Lynn Smith.
Actually, the Finance Committee did not meet this month. I hope you will notice that the monthly financial statement is on your FYI information, as are the Board expenses, and I hope you peruse those at your convenience. The next meeting for Finance Committee is Tuesday, October 29th, at 5:00 in the Heinz Building.
Thank you, sir. Policy.
The Policy Committee did not meet this month. Our next meeting is going to be October 22nd at 5:00 p.m. We will be meeting with or without updates from the state to review some of our current policies.
Thank you. Moving right along for the approval of the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approval of the consent agenda as presented, sign with a "a"?
Aye.
All those opposed, like a "s"? Our consent agenda is approved. Moving right along to New Business, at this time, I would invite Dr. Dawsonback, Dr. Williams, and Mrs. Cox to the podium for school improvement plans for Eastleigh and Wesley.
Good evening. As you know, all schools are required to develop improvement plans. However, general statute requires that schools deemed low-performing by the state submit a more detailed plan. There is also a time limit, within 30 days of being identified as a low-performing school, those schools must provide a preliminary plan to the Board, which we are here to do tonight, and you have been provided. The district will then make this preliminary plan, if approved, available to the public for comment and also input. Based on that input, a final plan will be developed and presented to you at the November meeting. The district also develops a plan, which you have been given, that will help specifically address the performance at each of these schools. The Department of Curriculum and Instruction met as a group. We took a look at the data that was provided for both schools. We also took input from each school and their principals, and we decided that in looking at some of the issues, they very much needed similar supports at each school. So, in summing those up, we looked at three areas that you will see identified in the district plan: improved academic achievement, additional resources for data and problem-solving, and retention of quality staff. Those are the three items that we plan to look at and support each of these schools as a district. We have already started working closely with each of these schools. Each of these schools have already started to work closely with their leadership teams, and they have developed plans as well. And here tonight with me are Dr. Sharon Williams from Eastleigh and Ms. Jamie Cox from Wesley Middle.
Good evening. Jamie Cox from Wesley Middle School. Our leadership team met, and we did determine some key areas of focus for the year, and those were to be instructional excellence and alignment and engaging families and communities. Based on our data and areas of focus, we developed three goals: to increase proficiency in all areas, to increase positive behaviors in the academic environment, and to increase family, staff, and community engagement with the purpose of increasing performance, positive behaviors, and creating an overall more positive school culture. As outlined in our plan, we have put steps in place, such as common assessments for the purpose of objective data analysis, incorporating more rigor in our lesson plans, professional development, recognizing positive behaviors for students and staff, and utilizing various platforms to communicate with families. We also want to increase the number of opportunities for families to be involved in the school, so our leadership team is working on that. By attaching accountability to our actions, we are confident that we are already on the right track to turn things around at Wesley and to show everybody just exactly how wonderful it is.
Good evening. The school improvement team at Eastleigh met to review our school performance grade in our data. We used our Teacher Working Conditions Survey, three years of data, as well as student discipline data as well. The school leadership team developed three goals that we will focus on for this 2019-2020 school year. The first goal focuses on academic proficiency in math and reading, measured by school performance grades. The second goal focused on teachers and administrators utilizing strategies to decrease loss of instructional time for students due to disciplinary reasons. The third goal focuses on Eastleigh having a positive school environment. Attached to each of these standards are action steps and strategies that we will use throughout the year in order to obtain and meet these goals. Some of the action steps include participating in weekly POCs in department meetings, including literacy and wicker in all lesson plans, vocabulary development, being an MTSS school and implementing check-in, check-out, having an EOMS matrix behavior for all students, and conducting walkthroughs and using the Teacher Working Conditions Survey as a baseline with teacher surveys. In addition, our administration will take time to meet each staff member on faculty and meet with them for at least 10 minutes to know who they are and what's the ins and outs of them. In addition, kudos cards will be provided to teachers to give them feedback when we are completing walkthroughs, a mid- and end-year survey will be given to teachers as well that goes along with Teacher Working Conditions Survey, and we will recognize teachers and our staff with a faculty and staff member of each month and to improve our school climate. With each of these goals set in place, we are sure that we can obtain a better letter grade so that we can actually show Eastleigh and Lee County Schools that we are a well-performing school and that we can actually show academic excellence at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Your dedication from both of you in recognizing your strength and weaknesses is definitely evident in the report, and especially the dedication you put towards the report for not only just the schools, but also our curriculum staff as well. I know after reading the -- because this is just a preliminary report, after reading what you provided with us, this Board can support you because this is a team effort in making sure that we continue to work hard in giving you the best package you can to retain and bring in new attractive teachers by always asking for supplement increases, and then also, when it comes to providing you the technology that you need. So, as a Board, we support you, and this is, again, a team effort. We can do our part as well because it is a, we're here together as a family, and we're going to go through this together as a family. At this time, is there any other discussion from the Board concerning the preliminary report, school improvement plans for Eastleigh and Wesley?
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions. In reviewing the school improvement plan for both Eastleigh and Wesley Middle School, it's evident that our laptop program is not being resourced as it was originally planned. Both the schools have hundreds of Chromebooks that are short of meeting the one-to-one laptop initiative, and I suppose you know that same problem is going on throughout the rest of the schools as well. My question is, what have we done and what are we doing to immediately fix this problem? Because the shortage should have an impact on our delivery with the students. Would you not think so?
We do have a plan in place. At this point, there is funds set aside to hopefully purchase laptops. We are at this point waiting on a budget to be approved by the state. That's definitely an issue that needs to be addressed, and we are working to address that. We are working that, we're trying to get unique in how we're using that within the schools. As technology breaks and we're unable to replace certain items, we're moving to class sets versus necessarily having a one-to-one. So, those are some of the different ways that we have worked to eliminate that being a major issue, but it definitely is something, and that's why it's included in those plans because it's something that we definitely want to address and improve upon.
Okay, and it's 68 pages for those in the audience, so there's a lot of things in that plan. My next question was, the class sizes were reported to be anywhere from 25 to 36 students, and that's well over the benchmark for middle school. So, I applaud what you have been able to accomplish under those circumstances, but what is the plan to attempt to reduce some of those class sizes?
We are working now with HR to take a look. We have to wait until preliminary numbers are in as we get settled throughout the year as students come in, and hopefully more allotments will be provided by the state so that we can offer additional positions to reduce those class size numbers. But again, that was also included because it definitely is a concern that each school has, because the smaller class numbers we can have, as well you know, the better those students can be served.
Yes, sir. You also have a very high turnover rate at Wesley, 24%. Wow. That's pretty high. So, and I understand that we're doing the surveys, but is there anything that can be done much faster, other than waiting for surveys, where you got quarterly surveys or monthly surveys? There appears to be something, I'd like to think that there's something that perhaps we as a Board could assist you with, particularly in Wesley.
In my opinion, and Ms. Cox can certainly chime in.
Yes, sir.
I think the Board has already -- I think the board has already taken a great step in fixing that problem and putting Ms. Cox in that building. Anytime you look at a school, regardless of the district, that has a consistent turnover in leadership, you will see a high number of teacher turnover. There is a direct correlation with that. Ms. Cox has been very consistent. Ms. Cox has worked very hard. You can sense it when you walk in the building, the improvement with the culture and the climate. I think she's done an excellent job this summer of hiring teachers that are a good fit. So, I think with Ms. Cox in that building as its leader, which you all had the foresight to make happen, I think that in turn will fix that problem.
And Ms. Womack, Ms. Cox has only been in that building as principal since the end of last January.
So, not even a full year yet.
Okay. The last thing I have is in Eastly, we worked hard to make Eastly an avid school, and everybody knows, and y'all know I'm a big fan of both of those schools. I attend all other events there. But yet, the school fell down in the category of low performing. And it has a very, very active ADVID program. I've been there. I've seen these things that's there. Is there any possibility that we're placing too much emphasis on the ADVID metrics versus enough on the EOG and the EOC performance among our broader base of students? And that's not something you would not have to answer directly. I mean, it's just something I think we might want to look into or to consider. Because looking at the report that, when they provided this report, the highest things that I saw was, you know, we've got a lot of behavior problems that went up as well, and I think Ms. Cox is going to fix that too as well. But if you looked at that, I would like to know if there's anything, any data or anything that we looked at that's not directly from the ADVID website. Is there anything that would, other than that, that would lead you to believe that we put a lot of focus on that? Because the ADVID program is selected students, am I correct, versus the broader spectrum of students? And that's kind of my question and something I'd like for you to ponder before you bring it back before the board, if you don't mind. Thank you.
And I will add to that, if I may. I certainly think all the programs that we have are a factor, but I think we also have to look at, Sanley Middle is an avid demonstration school, and we've placed a lot of emphasis on avid, and they are not here tonight as a low-performing school. So, I don't necessarily think that's a particular issue that we would want to point out. I think it's something that we may want to look at, at how we can dig deeper into that to offer it as a support program to enhance what we already have. But it's certainly something to look into.
Okay. Thank you.
In agreeing with Ms. Womack, she actually, we both talked about the same point when it comes to Chromebooks and laptops and how that affects the classroom, and I was glad to see that pointed out, and even myself and Dr. Smith discussed it last week when it comes to laptops and Chromebooks and that kind of thing. So, the board definitely recognizes with you that that is an issue that can be corrected. And again, also, we want to try to retain and attract the best teachers we can. And once again, I would advocate to this board, ask the county commissioners for another increase in teacher supplement. And I have no problem going on the record, asking this board to do that when that time comes back around, when the budget season comes around. One other thing I'd like to point out, if someone else has any discussion on this. Go ahead.
Dr. Dawsonback, I would like to ask you one question. I noticed that under changes that have occurred at Eastly Middle School since two thousand seventeen, there's a decrease in four teaching positions. Is that by design or erosion or?
In two thousand and seventeen, we had difficulty finding the right fit. Teachers were highly qualified for four different content areas, specifically with reading and math. So, we decided as a leadership team that it would be best to dissolve those positions, and when those positions were dissolved, they did not come back to us. One of the reasons why they were dissolved was it was because we had teachers in the building that were actually highly qualified. So, we thought it would be better to have a highly qualified teacher teaching those students versus having a sub in that position possibly for the rest of the school year. Some of those students in eighth grade would have had a teacher or a substitute teacher in their classroom for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade again if we had went that route of actually trying to find somebody just to fill a position.
And those positions have been filled?
They have not, no.
You're still short four teachers?
We're not short four teachers now. That position has just been dissolved.
Okay, good.
The last thing I would like to point out, that every time a Lee County Schools, school has received a low-performing test, a low-performing grade of a D, there have never been a repeat. So, every time that there has been a Lee County School that was designated low-performing, within one year, that was removed from them. And that is a testament to our staff at Central Office and those schools, and I have no, have no, I have complete faith in both of these schools that we'll keep that track record going. So, if there's no other discussion, I will call for a motion to approve the preliminary draft of the school improvement plans.
Patrick, I make a motion that we approve the preliminary draft of the school improvement plans.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the school improvement plans for Wesley and Eastly, same as saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, like aye? Thank you. The preliminary draft is approved. All right. Moving right along. At this time, I will call, call for a motion for a closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session to discuss information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under NCGS Section 143, 318, 11A1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of closed session, same as saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We stand, we are adjourned to a closed session. The sound of the gavel, and as soon as Dr. Cobble sits down, we will stand back and open session.
Oh, gee.
Thank you for sticking around with us. At this time, I will entertain motions for our HR reports.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the two-year contract for Anton Wilson.
Is there a second to accept the contract of Mr. Anton Wilson?
Second.
All in favor, same as saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like aye?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Personnel Human Resources Report.
Is there a second for the personnel report?
Second.
All in favor of the personnel report as presented, same as saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like aye? Thank you. Thank you all for joining us tonight. And at this time, I would entertain a motion for adjournment of the Lee County Board of Education meeting.
Mr. Chair, make a motion.
We're doing it together.
Make a motion to close.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you for all attending, and we stand adjourned.